Good morning, we will start the meeting of August thirteenth. First item is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We will move on to approve the payment of bills and vouchers. Do we have them here?
Yep.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Tim isn't here yet. Tell you what, let's start with some committee reports, we're going to start with Frank today.
That soil and water conservation district, they reviewed their budget again, I don't know if they presented it, brought it back in again, it's a little bit of a modification to it. Last night I went to Gooseberry Township meeting and the main concern, I guess, was some signage, signs being shot up and stuff like that and how to take care of them, that's all I got.
Kevin. Let's see, today is the thirteenth. Yeah, last week we had a highway tracking committee meeting after the board meeting and I used to have that in my book here, but did we cancel that meeting?
Yeah.
You did cancel that meeting, yeah, that's what I thought, that's why I couldn't remember what we talked about.
You're real puzzled.
If you had a heck of a deal, you'd have reported on it.
Yeah.
I had it in my book and I thought, okay, what in the world are we talking about?
Too bad you didn't give me the report anyway.
I'll cross that right out. Then the, on Wednesday, we had the diversion outreach committee meeting and the focus on that was where the outreach is going to be going here over the next few months and probably heard in the news that there was a meeting conducted by the Coalition South last night and they had invited Chair Banjo to that meeting and I guess that was well attended last night. A lot of questions, more questions than probably answers at this point in time, which is, from our standpoint, it's to be expected, I know they're anxious to hear more. And then on Thursday, we actually had the diversion authority meeting and I think the primary point to bring out from that meeting, and Brian, maybe you can add your thoughts on the meeting too, but the big issue there was we did approve the 2014 budget to come forward and along with that, modifications and changes to the language in the joint powers agreement. And the language that's in the joint powers agreement is very favorable to what both the Moritz City Council and our commission wanted in there to be certain that we knew what our future financial stake was in this and it's pretty clear in that JPA that until there is a federal authorization and a project partnership agreement, that Minnesota dollars that go into this project will be limited to what we already have paid and what's in the JPA for this year, which, Brian, I believe our shared number is down about fifty thousand for each of us, right? For both the City of Moritz and Clay County.
Yes.
So that was the, that was the biggest issue that presented itself. We had some updates from, the diversion authority also had hired the, I don't know, what's the?
CH two.
No, 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 I'm talking about Lance Yoey's.
Oh, yeah, Red River Basin.
Red River Basin Commission to do a study because, you know, we keep hearing about retention in this deal and the diversion authority has about twenty-five million dollars that we're willing to put into retention projects that help the, that will actually benefit the Fargo-Morit area in reduction along the main stem of the red. And the basin commission was the agency that's responsible for helping determine which of those projects would benefit, follow, meet the criteria for that and they're getting close. I think they're going to have those numbers for us either in September, October and then I don't know whether Buffalo Red has any projects lined up for that or not, but then they'd be willing to apply to gain access to some of that money. And all those things, of course, help the main stem of the red in addition to what the diversion would do. And that's really all I have.
I don't have anything. The only meeting I had was on Wednesday, August seventh, Moritz Planning Commission. General business, there was a request for an easement by John Haug on a development in Prairie Meadows addition and then a request to the City of Moritz to amend certain site development standards. Both were okayed by the commission and will be sent on to the city council at their next meeting. And at this time, we will go number two on our agenda, Rhonda Porter, Tim Dent, agreement with the Santi County for purchases of EDMS, whatever that stands for, Caseworks host support. If you can tell us what that acronym stands for, we sure appreciate, I would appreciate.
All right, EDMS stands for Electronic Document Management System.
Exactly what I thought.
Yes, and in this case, it's a solution developed by Next Chapter Technology called Caseworks. And so I'm going to start us out, but honestly, I'm going to let our more IT expert talk a little bit about this, but as you know, gosh, has it been a year and a half now? We, Clay, Becker and Ottertail purchased the Caseworks solution from Next Chapter Technology to scan all of our income maintenance documents and utilize that solution as a workflow. It's been wonderful in our unit, I don't know what we would be doing right now with our workload without that system. Both, all three of our counties are using that to full capacity at this point in our income maintenance unit and conversations have been happening around the state with a number of human service agencies about electronic document systems. And so Isanty County has met with Next Chapter Technology and they would like, they really liked our model and our shared service support model that we have where Clay County is the host for the three county project. So they have asked to, to, in a sense, utilize our server and support for doing this in their county. So that's why this agreement is coming into play.
Okay.
Did I get that all right?
You kind of said it all.
Okay.
So what we're looking for is, is a, we have an agreement here to add Isanty County as another site that we will host, similar to the way we host Becker County and Ottertail County.
Are they charged for that super suite?
Yes, yep, they'll be charged ten thousand dollars upfront and that will go towards the equipment replacement fund and then seventy-five hundred dollars per year ongoing and that'll cover both staff costs and equipment replacement.
You're not able to do this without any concerns on your department?
Absolutely, we, we designed this system for expansion. We think we could add probably ten counties on and still have rooms of them.
What happens if you did add ten counties? Is it a money-making operation then or?
Yeah, yeah, we would charge each county, you know, similar amounts, I think, you know, we would, it would, the more counties we're going to add on, of course, it would reduce the cost per county, but we still want to make sure that we, that we recover enough costs to cover our staff times, our electricity and our cooling and all that kind of stuff is included in those costs.
So are you actively looking for more partners in this right now, other counties? Are you recruiting?
Kinda, you know, we, you know, we, I talked to other IT managers from throughout the state and there are some other, you know, Steel County is actually a county that's doing something similar to what we are with this exact same product and they have some of their surrounding counties in an agreement with them, but we would like to add on some more counties to this.
Tim, do we have to, so we purchased the software, right? It handles all this record stuff?
Yes.
And do we, do we get charged a license, is there a license fee per county then?
Yes, there's licensing fees that they, that they pay directly to Next Chapter to pay for.
They pay those themselves.
And then there's licensing fees that they paid to Microsoft individually as counties.
Okay.
So no, we don't recover any of the software costs. Well, let me take that back, for the SharePoint licensing, the SQL licensing on our hosting system is part of the, our chargeback model, so some of that money will go towards maintaining those core systems that we maintain here, but each individual county has their own licensing that they have to maintain.
So they're responsible for it? And then how about, how about when we get into enhancement packages and things like that? Then are there, is there a design then that, that future increased cost to us then will also be, they'll take a proportionate share of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and right now, going back to your question about the licensing on the user end, each user, so for example, twenty, I don't, I think we've got thirty-five user licenses for Clay County and Ottertail, Becker has the same and Isanty County will have. And so we pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars per user, it's less if, depending on the depth of their use of the system. And then there is a maintenance agreement that each county, it comes out of the social service budget that we pay to Next Chapter, a maintenance agreement for all the support that they give us throughout the year, enhancements, those kinds of things. I think for 2014, it's twenty-three, about twenty-three thousand, twenty-five thousand for Clay County and again, the cost to this system, we see that fifty percent federal participation, so it was really nice to be able to implement it. And then on the server side and the host side, right now, Ottertail and Becker play, pay Clay County for the services through Tim's office and that host, so that would continue with Isanty County. So there's some.
And that was my, that was my question, Tim, is, is from the standpoint of us being the host and the software, for example, that's run on our main framework, or you call our system, does that in itself have its own set of enhancements on annual basis where we have to pay for enhanced upgrades and those types of things?
Yeah, yeah.
And if so, because I would imagine there's still our potential for enhancements on the individual user as well, which that's all covered then by each counties for their number of users, but how about on the main system itself then? Do we, do we have in here where that is also a shared?
Yes, yep, yeah, we, we pay software assurance contracts on those, so that we, we know exactly what those amounts are going to be, you know, many years out, as long as we keep paying those, we'll get all the newest enhancements to all those products.
Yeah, but my point is though, as we move forward, you talk about the ten thousand that we're charging for this and so on and so forth, are we going to be collecting from them in the future for the cost of those enhancements?
Yes, yes, every year.
Perfect, thank you.
Order your wish, gentlemen. I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Kerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Darren Brooke, personnel policy change and then another item on elected officials' health insurance, healthcare savings.
Good morning.
Good morning, Darren. Got your?
Let's tackle the policy change first.
Yeah, that's first thing I just.
That might go a little easier. Okay, currently, the personnel policy says that when a individual is terminating, they have to work their last day of employment, actual day of employment is their actual day. So basically, if somebody terminates and they want to take their vacation or their time off and then they have to come back on their last day of work to, for their termination date. And so we've had some requests and we took it to the PIC committee to say, well, what is the necessariness of coming, having to come back on the last day of work? Somebody could be gone for two months if they have two hundred and forty hours of vacation and then come back for one day to, to say that that would be their last day of employment. So we've took it to the PIC meeting, like I said, and decided that we would give them two options, basically that they could be paid out on their last day of employment and then they would be paid out their vacation, or if they wanted to take their vacation, then their termination date would be the last day that their vacation runs out. And the reason we did that was because, let's say somebody had, or this is why we're suggesting it, let's say somebody left employment here and then got a job somewhere else. Why would they have to take off a day of their new employment to come back and work one day here? And how productive is that one day really going to be? Probably not very productive if you've been gone for, you know, two months or a month and a half. And it, and what about if you moved to another state or got a job, you know, three states away and then you have to come back for one day of employment? So the PIC committee recommended that we do away with the requirement to come back to work on that last day and basically set a termination, termination date either on the last day of your work and then pay out your vacation or let you take your vacation prior to, and then your termination date would be when your vacation ended up, or ended. So that was the proposal and that's what, the change that is reflected in the personnel policy that we would like to make. The other, the other small change that we did make was that somebody that is terminating or retiring would have to write a letter stating such and then the department head would write an acknowledgement letter stating that we accept your termination or retirement and then that would go into the file as well. So that's what we're proposing, the language change in the personnel policy today.
Questions, gentlemen?
Yes. Making this policy, I mean, I can see it for people retiring or people who are terminally, on terminal leave or something like that, but for people who are resigning, are we just making it sort of convenient for them that they can go look for other work and, I mean, that they don't have to come back and?
We, we give them, they, we request in our personnel policy that they have to give us two weeks' notice, so whether they give us two weeks' notice and they're, you know, it starts the ball rolling so that we can begin the hiring process and everything else. People that are resigning, I mean, whether it's a termination or retirement or resignation, they're still basically leaving, leaving employment here.
I mean, when people give you two weeks' notice and start taking two weeks' vacation, that is really, almost like they resigned that day already.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
There could be.
Yeah.
The next thing I had on the last page and number two, where you got retirement.
Yep.
Your new wording, it says the department head will acknowledge the resignation, should that be the retirement? And you keep on going?
Uh, yeah, that's.
And a copy of the resignation notice?
Yeah.
Which, that should be retirement again?
That should be retirement, I can make that correction.
Another thing, if I may, the word termination, to me, has a negative connotation, means you're fired. That is, that's not what you mean here, or is it?
No, no, that's anybody that would be leaving.
Are you leaving?
Yes, it's kind of a, yeah.
All right, as long as that's, as long as that's clear. Kevin?
I think here there's, I, you know, I don't think there's any harm in what's being proposed here, you know, that, this is kind of a difference between a public entity and a private entity who may have language in there that deals with a pension plan or profit sharing plan because they want them there for the full period because sometimes there can be a situation where it can hinder the ability to, I mean, you can have employees in key positions where if they leave, your targeted goals might not be met because that person left, you know, it might be an important, an extremely important person in that area. So that's a difference in the, in the private side where there's, could be potential for profits involved and contributions made based on that. And so in those particular cases, I think that's important language, but in the case here, I just don't, I don't, I don't see why, why we should have that person come back for one day and quite frankly, I can't agree more with what it states in here, is it's probably going to be a very non-productive day anyway.
Right.
You know?
And, and we do request that the department heads and those give a four-week notice so that there is some more transition time. I don't think the intent is to say, I'm submitting my resignation today and tomorrow I'm going on, I'm going on vacation. They would still have to probably work that two weeks of notification.
Between the department, that's a department head.
Correct, yeah, and that's, this does give the department heads a little bit more flexibility on when they leave and how they, and how they pay out that.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor say aye. Kerry.
And I'll make that, like, change, that retirement change. Okay, the second issue is, basically, I'm bringing this to the board for discussion and information at this point, I don't think that we're ready for a decision from you yet. What I want to do is kind of let you digest the information a little bit and then come back in a week or two and go through to make the actual decision. Back in, according to the Minnesota statute, and this, this involves the elected officials and the healthcare savings plan. And according to Minnesota statute forty-three A, chapter seventeen, a compensation plan for elected officials cannot include a provision for vacation or sick leave. And so in two thousand eight, what we used to do is elected officials would get the maximum lump sum of a sick leave severance based on their number of years that they were here as an elected official. And then in two thousand eight, the legislator, legislature specified who can participate in the healthcare savings plan and basically said that elected officials can participate in the healthcare savings plan, but they can't receive a lump sum payment at termination. And so when this change came out in two thousand eight, I guess, I don't know if they were unaware of it or forgot about it or whatever, but the, a couple of the commissioners were paid out in two thousand nine and then when Commissioner left last year, Jennifer Pearson looked into it and the Minnesota State Retirement System or the healthcare saving, run the healthcare savings plan, said that you can't do lump sum payments out based on the sick leave severance. Of course, elected officials don't get vacation or sick leave accumulated, so they looked at that as a, would not be able to do a lump sum payment at, at, when they leave Clay County. But the two thousand eight legislator did say that they can participate in the healthcare savings plan, but it has to be a set amount like we do with the lieutenants and juvenile counselors. Each month, the juvenile counselors and lieutenants, through their contract negotiations, contribute twenty-five dollars each pay period into this healthcare savings plan. And it did say that the elected officials can participate in a healthcare savings plan, but it must be a specified mandatory employee contribution or an employer contribution at specified intervals not tied to termination of public employment. And so when we found this out, it kind of, we went in to change the personnel policy back several months ago and some of the elected officials had some concerns about that because it was a significant change to the policy and some of them would be out a significant amount of money because during their time, they haven't been contributing to a healthcare savings plan, they were basically counting on that, that lump sum when they left as an elected official. So in, in July seventeenth, the county administrator and myself met with all the elected officials and...
When you say that, non-commissioned elected officials, right?
Yeah, and, and that's kind of saying, the elected officials that work here full-time and then I'm considering you when I say commissioners, that's, I'm making that differentiation even though you are elected, I make the difference between commissioners and then elected officials or the, the other elected officials that we have that, that work the forty hours a week or whatever, so. So on July seventeenth, the county administrator and myself met with them and discussed a path forward on what we thought was fair and what we could do and couldn't do. Once we had that meeting, I did ask the Minnesota State Retirement System if a lump sum payment could be made and they said that you could do, the county could make a lump sum payment, initial payment, but it could not be any more than fifteen percent of their annual salary. So I brought that back to the elected officials and what we had decided on would be to take it to the PIC committee and their proposal was that they would do, the proposal was, if they would do a lump, the county would do a lump sum payment based on what they would have got as a sick leave severance based on the number of years that they have been an elected official, or if it was, if that was more, then it would be fifteen percent of their annual salary. And so one of the elected officials that we had did fall into that category that has been here longer and her lump sum payment would have been more than her fifteen percent of an annual salary. So we took all of that to the PIC committee and decided that, and then put out this proposal that not only the lump sum, but then requesting five hundred dollars per elected official to go into the healthcare savings account as a county contribution and then they would also contribute five hundred dollars a year of their own money into this healthcare savings plan. So what they were, their proposal was, was the lump sum payment to start the healthcare savings plan based on their, what their sick leave severance would have been and then five hundred dollar a year contribution by the county and a five hundred dollar a year contribution by the employee. We brought that to the PIC committee, had some discussions about that and then it was decided to move that proposal to the full board and that's what I'm here today for, to do that. Like I said, in my board agenda, I don't think we need a decision right now on, on that proposal, but we would like to get that decision within the next week or two after you've had some time to ask any questions that you may have of me or do any more research that you want to do on your own. So that's, that's kind of where we're at today. The, the other thing is that if the, the elected officials want to form their group, but some of the decisions that you're going to have to make today, or not decisions, but things that you're going to have to consider, is also, do the commissioners want to participate in that healthcare savings plan with the elected officials? Or there's also the possibility that the commissioners could form their own group with their, their own stipulations, meaning maybe a different, maybe a different employee contribution amount, a different whatever, you would have your own rules separate from the elected officials' account. And then also thinking about what you think would be the county contribution if... And then also thinking about what you think would be the county contribution, if any, and what would be the lump sum, if any. So that's why I'm here today, to present that to you and answer any questions that you may have.
For starters, when I talk about the elected people, and this part of my conversation, I'm excluding the commission. I'm talking about the other elected folks. So is it my understanding that all along there was this thought on their part that they would be getting this payment to them?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I kind of view that as, this is a reason why at one time I refused to take a race. And it's because we actually took some compensation away from some people and I didn't like that. And I also need to stick up for our elected people when I say that, in essence, we kind of took something away that they thought was theirs.
Correct.
Right? We didn't even know we did it.
Correct. Like I said, we didn't even realize that this was a law change until we started looking into it in December of 2012 when one of our commissioners left and we were wondering, you know, what the payout would be. And that's when they said, "Oh, well, this 2008 law change doesn't allow you to do that anymore."
Okay, then another question I have is, so we're talking about a potential one lump sum amount that would go in for these folks-
Correct.
To, within, it can't exceed the 15% of-
Correct.
-their salary. And then on top of that, then, then there is the request where it would be, it's basically saying, "Well, we're going to give $500 a year for their vacation and sick day, or sick pay, per year from this point going forward," provided that they put in $500 of their own money.
And it doesn't have to be a match. It doesn't, they don't look at it as a match. So if the employees, the elected officials decide they want to put $1,000 a year and that would be fine, and the county contribution $500, it doesn't have to be correlated to a match. So I just want to make that clear.
And then my other question here, when we talk about the healthcare savings plan, is this, this wouldn't be considered a high deductible healthcare savings plan, would it?
No, this is something different.
Because if it was, we'd run into trouble.
Yeah, I mean, if we eventually go to a healthcare savings account, or HSA slash VIBA account, there are some stipulations of what you can and can't use that healthcare savings plan money for. So if you're contributing to a healthcare savings account, you can only, you can only use that healthcare savings plan money for certain things.
But this would be a separate plan.
This would be a separate.
And that's the problem because you can't have two high deductible plans.
Right.
So you only have two high deductible plans.
Yeah. So this is more of a, this is more of a, this is probably more in line with what a VIBA would be, like, it can only be used for healthcare costs. And I have a laundry list of things that you can use it for, you can use it for health premiums. And you can only use it once you either retire or leave employment. You can't use it like you would a VIBA, like I could use my VIBA today. But this account, this healthcare savings plan through the Minnesota State Retirement System can only be used once you leave employment or you retire. Then you can start drawing funds out of that, so.
Well, that lump sum, the $27,000, that's more or less than, under the old system before the law changed, would that be more or less?
That would be a little, that would be a little bit less because of one of the elected officials, the lump sum payment was more than the 15% annual salary. So if we just went with the lump sum payment, the $27,700 would be a little bit more-
One would become another, sure.
Exactly.
Than what they would have understood.
Based on the number of years that they've been here. Yep.
And then the question we always have, where's that $27,000 going to come from?
Good question. I couldn't tell you. I don't know.
I think we talked about that at PIC. I mean, we had that question too, and we talked about that, what were some of the-
It could either come from fund balance or, I don't know how much is left in the on- anticipated, but-
That would be a great question.
It's already been accounted for in the financials previously as compensated absence of some.
Frank?
Back in 2008, the legislature, I mean, I guess you probably weren't on at that time, I'm not sure. But there must have been a purpose why they did this. And now are we trying to circumvent that or?
No. Sorry.
Yeah.
No, if you have an answer, fine.
Well, I don't know why they did it. It's probably because there was probably an abuse here and there of elected people electing and voting on their own compensation bills or packages. I don't know what the history of why this was changed at this point. So, I know that's a hard question for me to answer if we're trying to circumvent it.
Man, I sort of look at this as a $500, I mean, say we contribute $500 or $1,000, whatever figure we would come up with if we do it. I look at that as a race to our own county employees. Shouldn't this be done on contract negotiations or can we-
These are non-union, just the elected people.
This is people like us or-
All right, but do they have contract negotiations or?
No.
They don't, no?
We just set their salary.
The salary is set and then the agreement was that when they left employment, they would get this lump sum payment as a sick leave severance. But based on the 2008 law, elected officials don't get sick leave or vacation. They basically can, they get paid, whether they take days off or not, they still get paid. Whereas the employees that we have in the county, they accumulate and accrue sick leave and vacation, and then when they are sick or go on vacation, they have to use that balance down. Elected officials aren't necessarily held to that same system, I guess you could say.
But employees, when they become elected officials or run for these offices, are they aware of this?
I guess, I don't know. It would be up to the elected official on whether they would be aware of the stipulation of not getting a sick leave vacation accruals anymore.
But just to clarify, what this is trying to do is just restore what we thought we had until just a couple of months ago. Because this, the policy was that we would be paid out the severance-
Right.
-equivalent to how our table was on how long we had been here. And so we thought, all along, we've always thought that we had this benefit when we retired. Well, the law changed in 2008, but we didn't know that until recently, so we're, this is just trying to restore some of that.
I realize they're trying to restore some of it, but there must have been a purpose with that 2008 law, and I guess that's what, I don't know, you know, I don't know.
Chris, we don't have the answer to that.
And maybe that's worth pursuing as part of this, what Frank is suggesting here is that maybe we need to find out more of what that intent was and, you know, you brought up the one thing, Darren, that, well, there might have been abuse in it. The only abuse in it can be by commissioners, not by auditors or treasurers or sheriffs because they don't get to vote on budgets and what they get. That's responsibly the five people that sit here on a particular case. So the abuse would have to come from the commission. And that, and that's where I say we need to separate this thing between those elected people and the elected people sitting at this table. There's a difference there. Because from our standpoint, you know, I probably agree with the legislature that maybe that thing could be abuse if you could have five people that could be on that board and who don't care, and they're in their last couple of years or something, and they can just say, "Well, I want to vote to get everything I can for myself before I leave."
Right.
Kevin, do I hear you saying at the bottom of the page we have in front of us here that the board, if we go this route, should form our own group?
Well, absolutely, absolutely. And it would be completely different criteria.
That's kind of the recommendation we have heard.
But I'm not even saying that I would even support even us, the commission, doing a group. That's a separate conversation. Right now, my conversation is focused on these people who are missing something that they thought they got. Now, we say, "Well, we don't, if the legislative intent was for them to no longer have that, well, did they also have before that the ability to contribute to a retirement account or a health savings account?" So maybe that was the switch off, that, you know, so that's where we need to, I think Frank's on the money there and maybe asking some of those questions. Maybe we need to research a little bit more and go back to your PIC committee. What was the intent of that law? And at the same time, did the new, did the new law come into place that allowed us to switch those funds in from the sick pay, vacation pay, to a healthcare savings account? You know, and I, these people always thought, you know, had they known, and I'm going to just guess here, but had those elected people known that they lost that part of what they thought was their compensation package, each year they come to the board and they come to us and talk to us about what they think they should be paid.
Right.
And my guess is had they known this happened, that maybe in 2009, when they came to us, they may have asked for a different compensation package than what we gave them because they didn't realize they'd lost this.
Well, and they would have had more time to start contributing since 2008 rather than not contributing at all.
I do, I was just going to try to help fill in the history gap a little bit.
Can you come up here, Bonnie, please? So we have a microphone.
Great. Thank you. Um, many years ago, when this was first formed, it was specific to the elected. And that included the county board, if I remember right. And then there was a totally separate, I don't know what to call it.
Contract or?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, contract, but anyway, program, whatever, for the employees. And so the one that was for the elected did not talk about sick leave, termination, vacation, any of that because elected don't have those types of things, so we didn't have that verbiage in it. Somewhere along the line, this was all combined into one, you know, the regular employees with the elected. I'm sure it was trying to make things more compact, more efficient, less paper for the policy and, you know, why should you have two separate things and everything? But it, my understanding is when they put it all together and they start using the words like vacation and sick leave and termination and stuff, and those words that don't apply to elected people, that's where the problem came in. And I really appreciate Darren and Jennifer discovering this because I would have been very saddened to retire in something I thought I was going to be getting and now suddenly, you know, I've had this in my retirement plan for all these years and suddenly it's not there. So I appreciate them bringing it to light and that it can get straightened out again. And I think if it would have been left alone the way it was originally, I think it might have been okay. It did have to get changed. At one point, it wasn't an HSA, and so I think, and there were some changes made to it to create the HSA part of it because you could no longer give a lump sum, which I think you stated, it had to be an HSA. And so that was part of the change over the years too.
Any other comments or questions at this time?
Well, I guess my comment is still, you know, I'm trying to see whether we're, we're trying just to circumvent something, you know. They put this law in for some reason, you know, all of a sudden, well, now they're not going to get their vacation pay what they anticipated. Now, okay, now we're going to give them something else. You know, there must have been a purpose for this, and I don't know what that is, you know.
I think Darren can come up with an answer for us on that, hopefully, in the next week or two.
Looking to that particular change in 2008. And in 2008 is when they said basically that elected officials can participate in the healthcare savings plan, they just can't do it under a, you know, sick leave severance policy. They can contribute their own money, the county can contribute money on a regular basis. So it's still out there, but like you said, it's, you know, I don't know if we're circumventing something by giving a lump sum payment. And I also see Bonnie's argument that she's been here for many, many years and was expecting this at the end, and all of a sudden we've kind of pulled the rug out from under them and, you know, so it's not, there's, it's not an easy situation where-
Maybe you can get that information there and we can maybe have another PIC meeting to talk a little more about it. We should probably have John here too, at least when we talk about the commissioner's position too, because it would probably have the greatest impact on him based on the number of years he's been a commissioner and you probably, than the rest of us.
Well, I don't want to be opposed to any lump sum payment for us.
But I'm just saying, it's, you two would be more impacted than the three of us just because of your tenure here, so.
Right, right.
Do you want to discuss at this time, you mentioned Josh isn't on here, but the fact of if the county board wants to participate in this with the other elected officials, should we have a, we have three choices here, form our own group, not participate, join the other elected officials' group. Do you want to discuss that at this time at all?
I think it would have to be either one or three. I don't think we can be joined in with these because we would have to have different criteria.
Okay.
That's my mind, that's my personal opinion.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, we can talk about that another time then.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie.
2014 budget update. Brian?
I'm going to have to excuse this.
Yes, so you have another meeting to go to.
We could set the budget now with today, we got three of us here.
Absolutely.
Just due to the preliminary budget this morning.
I look around and see three commissioners left out of five when it's my turn to have the mic. Is he trying to send me a message of some kind?
I was thinking about leaving.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll make it quick, huh? You don't have a lot of information in front of you. We have continued to work on certainly the budget, but we'll just run over the items that we have there. You, you had asked last time, the board had asked, for the effects of not funding the .5 position for extension. And that was a new position. And then also, I think Mr. Campbell asked specifically of the extension folks that were here, Ben and Josh, that what were their current programs under the 4H program? So they are listed both on that attachment that you have, so you may want to review that. I guess I just received these. And I think it's interesting reading to compare what the .5 position is expected to do or is being asked to do in relationship to what the current club is doing. And I did indicate discussion there too. And I think Commissioner Everett, no, Mr. Campbell is on extension and Commissioner Gross. So they know what's going on there in regards to filling the 4H position right now. And I did have a little discussion with Mr. Anderson in reference to what their expectations are going into the future. Is that going to be a more efficient position because of streamlining some things and what they've gone through in the past couple, three years there? So I think that needs to require some thought and discussion by the board before we make any direction on that new request of a .5 position is about an additional $35,000, so. I'm not sure where it should go.
Do you want to, do you have, want to have conversations as we do each one or you want to wait till he goes through it all and come back or how do you want it? Because I-
I want to let him go through the whole thing and then we'll come back.
And then come back? Okay, very good. We'll do that. Then moving on to item number two, Lacey and Prairie's Community Action Partnership, and there's an attachment there. I had asked, I'd met in fact with Joe and Dale, and they itemized the effects of not fully funding the 2014 increase. Remember, we talked about the fact that there was about a- Remember, we talked about the fact that there was about a 30% increase, it was about a $9,000 increase because of the cutbacks and the, the sequestration and things of the federal government. And, uh, I, they said basically, in, in the, in the letter you'll see, that, uh, they said it'll be a cutback in personnel of the position, you know, the hours. I don't know to what degree, if it'll go to a .9, .8 position, or whatever. And then they identify all the different programs and effects, and at what percentage will that be? So, um, I guess you can certainly read through that, and we can come back and discuss that a little bit more, too. I, I think you've given me some good feedback in regards to that, so I think I feel strongly, I think I know where the board wants to go on that. So I'm not so clear on the extension part. Item number three, Commissioner Gross alluded to that earlier, that Soil and Water Conservation had their meeting last week, and they resubmitted a request reducing their increase from 4% to down to 3%, which is a $2,000 savings in their budget request for the county. Um, item number four, we've had several meetings with different departments, and we have a couple more to go. Technology Services, Information Services, sheriffs, Law Enforcement, and Corrections, and Highway Department. They, they have come up with some savings in every one of those departments, and I don't have them listed here. We just met with some of them yesterday. You got, you have to remember that this is kind of ongoing process here. And if we list some savings today, and then tomorrow, or today, we find out later on, as you'll see down here, the insurance costs, we thought we might as well wait for one more week before we enter all of those into the computer and give you another suggested figure, or a figure where we're at. So, but there has been savings in each one of those departments that we have come up with, and it's in the area of $100,000, which is real positive, maybe more like 100 and a quarter. And Lori has also been dealing with the Department of Revenue through contacts and sharing information with the City of Morehead and different things. So, um, she, she felt she had some good news on, on last Thursday or Friday on this, and we've kind of decided that this may be fluid until September 1, until the Department of Revenue comes back and tells us exactly what the levy limits are going to be. But it'll also, uh, the biggest responsibility was set with you folks, and as to where you want the levy to be at, too. So, um, we thought it was much more restricting, restrictive earlier on than we do now. So, um, we tried again to, Jennifer called down to the co-op to ask that percentage increase, and they would not give it to us. And today, they will be releasing that information. And I'm bothered by that a little bit, and I gave them some information to carry from this board, that if they have information that affects our budget, we deserve it. We pay for it. They work for us, we are customers. And, and if they know it a week ago, two weeks ago, uh, they should give that information to us. And I made it very clear to them that we would not be happy with that if they know that information. If they're holding on to it because they're rechecking figures, that's one thing. But if they know it, and they're not giving it to us, uh, until a magical day, I have a problem with that. And I know the board has expressed that. So, uh, she is going to express that to them very seriously today, that, but we'll get the information today, too. Anyway, just that's the information. Positive effects on the budget, I touched on this last time, but I just put it in print this time. The county program aid is up slightly with what we estimated. We, we used the figure 500,000, it's actually gonna be up 527,000. MCIT dividend, um, is greater than what we plugged into the system of 178,000. And Commissioner Campbell referred to it earlier. From the expenditure side, it's a decrease of expenditures of about $50,000. And like I said, we're not getting too encouraged by that, because the item number six may take up a good chunk of that. So we'll know by next time, and we'll bring those figures in, and, and, so, with that, Mr. Chair, if you would like to go back to the extension for discussion, um, I, I really hope to know what this committee feels, or the commission feels, the importance of this.
Well, I, you know, I, you know, and again, this goes to the fact that all of us, when we serve on these committees, we want what's best for the committees, and so on and so forth. But, uh, you know, it was a while, it was a while ago that that halftime position went away.
Right.
And, um, what's going, you know, when you, when you look at these effects of the no halftime 4-H program coordinator in Clay County, it says no 4-H after-school clubs offered in Barnesville Holly. Um, the, the problem with that is, we didn't, we didn't have them before, had it not been for the outside federal dollars that came in, that, that allowed us to do that. I don't know that we can be in a position to always reinvest in everything that the federal government no longer pays for, because it's gonna happen more and more and more frequently. And so, was it great, uh, you know, for, to have it when it, when it was here? Sure it was. But when we're in a position, when, when we're having to find some areas, I, I just don't think that we can be in a position to keep funding things that either the federal government or the state government decides they're no longer gonna fund for us. That's got nothing to do with how good the programs are. Uh, and, you know, so I just, um, I, I guess that's where, where I'm at on that, and I, I, um, you know, when, when you talk about the after-school clubs, you know, I think all areas, they can, they can still have 4-H clubs. But what we're, the difference here is they have, they're talking about after-school programming that, that's going on in those areas, and they might be once a week, or once every two weeks, or once a month, or whatever they are. That's what's gonna do. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be saying that we're gonna see clubs, the actual clubs eliminated.
Right.
They're gonna still, if, if they were there before, they're gonna be there now. So at this point, you know, and I, and I serve on the extension committee, and I think an extension, or the, yeah, I think extension's great, and the 4-H program is probably, to me, the heart of it for local communities, you know, cause it deals with our kids. But, uh, you know, we got a full-time, or we're gonna have another new full-time person now, and, and they do a great job. When my son was in there, I believe they had just one full-time person in there, and they did a great job, so. I, I just wanted, that's my opinion on that one.
I, I agree with that, too, Kevin. And I, I mean, for me, it's a matter of, we've only got so many dollars to spend, and so, you know, I guess we have to make those decisions on what our priorities are once we get all our figures in, when we know what our health insurance, you know, all these things may change, just based on that one bit of information that we haven't got yet. And so, until we know all those, it's really, at least from my perspective, it's hard to, you know, to, to sit here and say, well, I don't, I don't support that, that position for, for 4-H, but I may or may not, depending on where we end up, you know, with all of the dollars, and, uh, you know, and then, and then what else? You know, how much money do we have to spend? And, and these are the places that need it. And so I think then we'll have to set our priorities about what we can, can afford, so.
Lori, I'd like to ask you, you mentioned you're going to find out soon what the state will say, how much we can levy?
September 1st, yep.
Now, I thought at one time it was 1.5%, which came out a little less than that here. Have they made some changes, or can you be a little-
They haven't. We just reevaluated the formula and possibly came up with a little bit more money, but, um, we're still gonna have to cut some significant dollars. And like Grant said, the health insurance is, depending on what that comes in at, makes a big difference on how much we're gonna have to cut, so.
Yeah, and I, and, and this goes back to my, the argument I, I made last year, too, and, and, you know, we, we're getting all bent out of shape here on where we're gonna have to cut, where we're gonna have to cut, where we're gonna have to cut. And we don't really even have yet where we are revenues over expenditures, expenditures, or vice versa, for the, what's actually occurred and going to occur for the remainder of this year. You know, for, I think it's obvious, it's very clear to anybody who looks at our fund balances, to see that we've improved those fund balances tremendously over the last three years, and I think Lori would have to agree to that. So, but at what point do you continue to take money from the taxpayer to put it in the bank?
Right.
That's, that's my point, when, when we, if we have an adequate amount in there. So, so that's another factor that's still out there. Now, with the last report we got, things were running fairly close, you know, but I, I still believe we're gonna end up having revenues over expenditures.
And some of these things aren't cuts we're talking about, they're decreases and increases.
That's right.
Brian, Lays and Prairie's.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and very, very good comments, and that's what we need to hear as we go through this, because if you remember, right, there was a new request list, and we're working, a lot of them are internally, and we're working with the same philosophy. This is a new request. This is an increase. And how much of that increase do you wanna go with? And I, I think we need to come back with that.
You've already done Lays and Prairie's, right?
Uh, well, you talked about-
You've gone through all of them, a little bit.
Yeah, you talked about that a lot last time. That's not a new request, that's an increase, uh, but it's an, it's a 30% increase on the program that you already have. So it's not a new program, it's an increase. I think we've received a lot of input from you folks on that, that you feel is pretty important.
That, that increase in that particular one, and this, this is the one that primarily deals with senior citizens, right?
Absolutely, senior coordinator.
And what we're talking about, in these dollars, these, these would be $9,000 of money that would needed to provide our current senior citizens in Clay County the same level of services they had last year.
That is correct.
That's just, that's an important thing to recognize here, that-
It's a maintaining service.
Yes, it's a maintain level, because there's, there's a difference in having outside money come in to allow to do new things, that once that money goes away, maybe you can't do those anymore. But there's a, there's a certain level, I mean, if we didn't have this senior citizen service, they could be making choices that could cost, uh, Clay County and Minnesota taxpayers even more.
Right.
Because if they don't have the right supplemental plans in place, it can ending up costing more, which could be a bigger cost to the state and the federal government.
I think you mentioned it last week, Brian, about the, we might see a huge increase in demands on social services if we didn't have this program.
Right.
So, so.
The one way or the other, we're gonna pay. You're gonna pay? Yeah. Okay. Very good. Um, we do have, oh, I, I think I mentioned down at the bottom as we went over, we do have other meetings set up, especially with social services, and I think Rhonda has identified a couple different shifts. I'll say shifts, I, I'd like to say savings, and I think it will be, but there's some shifts there. And we, we need to discuss with Public Health. Um, and that's probably, they're the last two, and they're set up for this week. So we'll, we'll have some better figures for you next week, when we get this out.
Mr. Chair, Brian, I, Brian, I wanna make one comment on the, um, when it comes to the, you know, you're dealing with these other, in the Highway Department, and you said there's some change. The, the one thing that I do not wanna see is, for example, that license tab issue that we did, and that was, that's a controversial issue. There's people who don't wanna be going in there and paying that extra $10.
The wheelage tax.
The wheelage tax. Uh, and, you know, I support that because we need it for our roads.
That's right.
And I don't want that money to be offset, or to say that we can use that to pay for some other service other than fixing those roads.
Right.
And that, cause that's crucial. So I don't wanna see his local money disappear and be replaced by that for something that's-
Right. And, and, Mr. Chair, we had our meeting with Dave just yesterday, and we made that very clear, that, that wheelage tax is for improvement of the roads. And he-
That would not otherwise be done.
Absolutely, that would not otherwise be done. And what we did, he identified three areas, and we'll identify those in a, in more of a formal report with you when we go over these. And what he did is, he evaluated, um, his, oh, professional services. Will he need as many professional service dollars? How about right-of-way dollars and things like that? So he, he, he went through and identified, um, more accurately. It's just like, I'll use the example, and we didn't push him at all in regards to this, because one thing that we don't wanna do is say, well, gee, you can get by with less dollars, when you can't get by with less dollars, on certain things. And I'll use an example, the jail. If we have to house people out, and we say, well, gee, you have to cut your food budget, yes, but I'm, I have X amount of prisoners, so reduce it $10,000, that doesn't do any good when you spend that $10,000. That's not proper. But we did, as we went through, with, uh, the boarding fee for, um, the, the prisoners over here, will change, because we have to push six prisoners out next year. Well, that's about a $2,500 saving, something like that. Well, Julie hadn't realized that, and she said, well, that's a good point, as we go through it. So that's what we go through and try to look for any, uh, maybe, um, misjudgments that they have, have, have found. So that's what we're doing right now.
Thank you. We'll go to your update. Do you wanna do that if you're desk or here?
I'm about it along.
Okay.
When you get my age, you don't wanna move around that much, I'm just kidding.
You're young.
That's right. That's right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a follow-up from, from, on one of the items that, uh, Mr. Campbell was talking about, in regards to the, the retention, water retention that the River Basin Study is doing. And I, and, and I, I know he's mentioned it before, but the diversion authority set aside $25 million, was it? For programs that would retain water, and that's what the Red River Basin doing, is doing right now, is looking at and making that message clear to the, to the watershed groups, that if they've got projects out there that are going to assist in retaining water to help in the flood, that they're willing to step forward and fund those issues. So that's a real big issue that they're, that they're looking at, so. Uh, I had a chamber meeting, and it's the Public Affairs Committee that I'm on at the chamber, and they talked a lot about a project, or a, I guess a proposal, and things that, that I know this board is very concerned about, and that is keeping things as competitive with North Dakota as possible. And they had a discussion about the cigarette tax in Minnesota, as, as it's gone up, and what the, the business that has shifted for maybe the mom and pop stores, the, the stop-and-goes and different things. The convenience stores, I should use that terminology, I guess. But, um, so, we discussed the pros and cons, and, and one of it is, um, that, you know, with the flood protection and everything that's taking place in, in Morehead, and the assistance that's gotten from the state, um, I think sometimes it's a little difficult on our state representatives to, you, you wanna stay level with, with North Dakota, but yet, we're asking for funds to help flood protection, so, um, you-
Gotta come from somewhere.
It's gotta come from somewhere. And, uh, those are some of the discussions that we had in it. So I, it was a very meaningful discussion. Uh, the motor vehicle plans are moving forward. We had a, another meeting, uh, last week with the architect, and we went over the plans again, and Robbie has been in contact with some builders, so we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow afternoon in regards to that, and then we'll bring it to the board within a week or two, the next meeting or, or after. So we can get some, the figures down, and you guys can look at the, what we have laid out, and see if you wanna move forward with that. So, that's coming very quickly. Um, the solid waste technical committee met again after the, the solid waste advisory meeting the other day. And they're working through, or, or working on transportation coordination. Um, I, I think they've, they feel that the fines from the burner and perm can be brought to the landfill fairly easily, but it's, uh, to be very efficient, they wanna bring solid waste back. And to the types of equipment, and the types of loading and things, it's, it's more complicated than what you would think. You'd think just a return trip, but, but Morehead was there and expressed some real concerns about their transfer station, and how they load, the types of trailers that they have, and things like that. So they've, they've got a lot of work to do there, but they're working on it, so. Um, we had a land management meeting, probably not a whole lot to, to share there, we certainly keep you up on it, and then the diversion meeting. And then last Friday, had an administrator's meeting with six other administrators within the area, went really well. Main topic, I guess, was the wheelage tax, and budgets, and different things. Uh, I understand that, I don't know, you know, Otter Hill County is having discussions about the wheelage tax. They did not pass the wheelage tax yet, but they're looking seriously at the, at the sales tax on it. And there's some logic there, when you're a, when you're a county that has an awful lot of outside visitors to come in and help pay for your roads, the sales tax probably, um, is maybe better for them than the wheelage tax, so, um, that's, that's kind of an interesting one. We're not that way.
They're gonna give way more money.
Oh, way more money. Mm-hmm. So, and, and this last week, we've spent a lot of time on budgets and analyzing different things, and talking to people, and we're gonna get there. So, that's it, Mr. Chair.
First lady, anything for you?
Nope.
Regent?